Okay, so we will be coming back to you with a proposal and looking to move forward at some point.
Yep, and it's, there's a quick turnaround, so she should, Michelle should be back soon for your approval.
Very soon.
But in the meantime, if there are questions, please let us know.
Thanks, Michelle.
Okay, thank you, Michelle.
Okay, high school is next. CTEI.
Can we start? I know Ivy couldn't be with us this evening. Our students are really busy. I know they have jobs and family obligations. So you know quite a bit about our Women of Color series.
Yes, so Ivy wanted to be here tonight, but she was on the schedule at work and didn't want to get herself on the bad side with her employers. So she did want to talk to you about this, but she had faith that I could do it as well. So Ivy Saez, who is a remarkable young woman at Leamester High School, and she went out last year and she secured a grant to bring in guest speakers, and specifically women of color who are in leadership positions. And so the idea was to inspire students to try to get into these leadership positions and get the education and the work ethic and the ambition to really push themselves to become leaders in the community or in the country or in the world. And so she has brought in a series of speakers, and they range from a college professor of psychology to retired Army Colonel, my former commander, who was gracious enough to come in, and then athletic trainer, a college athletic trainer. And to bring these folks in to share their story, share their experience, and try to inspire our students to achieve these amazing lifestyles as well. So typically, the way that it works is students can sign up, and our guest speaker will start in the auditorium and they do a presentation. Typically, they explain their story, their journey to where they've gotten to. They'll show their childhood homes and describe their education. One of the main themes that has really come out of it was how education was something that they used to empower themselves and put themselves into positions to break cycles of poverty. Or I think all of them were first-generation colleges that we've had. Ethnic groups, to make that broader. So I've talked to an educator that I know who is of Asian descent that we want to maybe bring in for next year.
Ivy herself is dynamic. Do we know what her plans are for next year yet?
So she, you know, she told me, and now I don't remember.
Okay.
So I've asked kids to like tell me where they're going to college because I want to know, but that's a lot of kids.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I can't, do you happen to know Matt? I know it's a good school, too.
Oh, she is, she's amazing.
She'll do amazing things, so.
So if we ever can bring her before this body, it'd be great because I just think people need to see her. And she has an energy that is, it just comes out of her pores, almost, right? And she excites people, and I've been watching her series, and it seems to be growing with every speaker that she brings in. And students are really gracious, and they're excited, and they listen to Ivy. So she's going to do great things.
Yeah, she's definitely going to do great things. She's a great combination of, I think, energy and grace, and.
Nicely said, nicely said.
Yep, so she's been fantastic with this project. And you know, even setting up the meetings for the folks who are going to come in, Ivy runs those meetings. So we've worked on a couple of things, like one time when we asked for somebody's, what their typical honorarium fee was, and it was a couple of extra zeros after what we normally would have thought. Ivy's, Ivy's eyes kind of went, whoa, and I did have to, you know, the potential speaker, who, and we ended up not going with them. She did say, well, I can see you're a little surprised, Ivy, so I said, okay, we're going to work on your poker face a little bit. You know, but she's done a great job, and she manages everything from sending out the menu to arranging the kids to come in. She's done fantastic.
It is student-driven completely. Thank you. Thank you for that overview.
Of course. Ivy would have done better, but.
That's all right.
All right, and now.
Your presentation, yes.
LHS and CTEI. Do you want to speak to the pictures at all, or are you?
That's the.
The food, I mean, if you want to speak.
That's what Josh and I, before the breakfast. Somebody come over and took a picture, and we thought that showed the unity.
You don't need to explain. We didn't think you were eating all that food.
That was breakfast for the bands.
That was breakfast for the bands.
But it is a good way to start, so.
A lot of you actually were at that incident, and then there's our mostly well-behaved fan section at a basketball game. So mostly, so we'll kind of tag-team this, and we'll talk about what's going on at LHS for you folks, so. Slide? Oh, do I have a clicker? I have a clicker.
I think you'd point to the corner. It's right over there.
Is this on? It is not on. There we go. You have to be smarter than the device you're using. So first, I guess, who are our students? Because the demographics, both in the community and at the school, have changed a lot. And I didn't grow up in Leamester, but I grew up in Lunenburg, about 10 minutes away, so, you know, I'm familiar with the community. Three kind of takeaways from this. This is the first year, according to the DESE data, that Leamester High School is, less than 50% of our student population is white. We are, as of this year, a majority-minority district. And connected to that is a significant rise in our English-language learner population. So we gave 195 access tests this year, which is pretty close to double than where it was a few years ago. And that changes how you kind of do things at school. Everything from how you engage students with the curriculum, how you get them access to the curriculum, to the things that you celebrate. So I have never had students who cared about the World Cup, World Cup soccer, until this year. And it was fantastic. That's actually the Brazilian contingent celebrating before they lost, which was a very tough time for them. So it changes a lot of those dynamics, and it brings with it some challenges. We also have an increase of about 20, almost 20% of low-income students over the last five years. And that impacts how you do things from how you plan after-school activities with transportation to our involvement in programs like Early College that seek to provide opportunities for students who are first-generation college, or who maybe college wasn't something that they thought about doing before. So I've had some meetings the last week with, over the last week with the Early College folks on ways that we can expand those opportunities, and that directly addresses those population groups.
And I'll just add the parent liaisons helping immensely with the communication with these groups, as well as our dean of students down at CTEI, Jimmy Kelly. He speaks fluent Portuguese, and we've had a huge influx of Portuguese people. And it's a huge help when he's dealing with discipline and talking with parents. And we share all these people on both sides of the house, and it's a big help.
And I'm on, what, day 230, I think, of Duolingo Spanish. So I did an announcement the other day. I tried to do an announcement in Spanish and an announcement in Portuguese a couple times.
Killed it.
It did not kill it. So I told students, if they had not checked their, the spelling of their name for their diploma, to come to La Pacina de Principal. I meant La Officeina. La Pacina is the pool, so.
Couldn't find him.
They couldn't find the pool. I wish I'd done it on purpose, and we always tell students to, you know, oh, it's right next to the, you tell new freshmen, it's always, you know, right down on the.
On the roof.
How do stu-, how do they, so in a lot of cases, like Hispanic, the, how do you list yourself? Is it, you have to be 100%, or you have to be a percentage of? How does somebody categorize themselves?
A lot of it's self-identification.
Because, I mean, like Latinos been here 1957, 1956, so there are a whole lot of changes. So I don't know how much of it is 100%. I know the Haitians, the people from Ghana, more likely 100%. So I don't know how you sort of list that. So it's whatever they check off the box.
Yeah, I mean, they can list themselves as multi-race, but that's non-Hispanic multi-race. So, and that number's actually gone down in the district in the last five years. So it was around 6%. It's closer to.
So it's whatever they fill in, I mean, basically, okay.
A slide? Oh, it's me. I'm in Colonel mode where I just tell somebody else to do the slides. So our MCAS scores. So MCAS scores dropped across the state in coming back from COVID. They dropped even more in Leamester. We're down from about 50% of our EL, on ELA student scoring needs, excuse me, exceeded or meeting, down to about 37, and from 44% exceeding or meeting in math, down to 38. So there are some areas for growth that we need to target there. In particular, I think we need to, if we can work with our students with disabilities and close the gap for them. It's about, it's a little over 20% or 20-point difference between all students, the Leamester High School average, and our students with disabilities. So if we can improve those scores, we can gain a lot of leverage there. And if we can work with our EL students, because it's even, the gap's even bigger there. It's 23 to 25 points for our EL students. So if we can close those gaps, then I think that we can build back up again to where we were pre-COVID. Yep. And there's the biology.
Can we go back?
That's combined LHS and CTEI scores. We didn't break them out for this presentation.
Is the data from 2021 broken up?
Yep, the first column is 2022, the next column is 2021, and then the final is the state average this last year, 2022. So one shows the drop in scores, and then the other compares us across the state. So there's work to be done, and it's, you know, some of it goes with new curriculum that we've implemented that I think gives all students the chance to do rigorous grade-level work. You can't expect a student to do well on a test of 10th-grade skills if they haven't been doing 10th-grade work throughout the school year. So the new curriculum in place, some traditional training that we've done with teachers on co-teaching and ways to support students with disabilities and our EL students, and then using data to target students who need extra support, and then giving the interventions that they need to improve. So for example, we have our after-school tutoring program that we're paying for with the Early College Grant. I actually have to add another tutor to that program now because there are a number of kids who are showing up for it, and there's students who need to be there. So it's finding those opportunities, so those are the ways that I think we can leverage to get those scores back up again.
What data are you using to predict what your score is going to look like?
So the target that I've set is to close that gap by 50%, and it's a pretty ambitious goal, but I think there's a lot of, there are some quick gains that I think can be made through the practices that have already been implemented. So the new curriculum that we're using, the data cycles that we're doing with different departments. I'm meeting with biology to look, just as an example, I'm meeting with biology teachers to look at their benchmark data assessment to determine which students need to be prodded and pushed into the after-school tutoring or other opportunities that we create for them. So, and I do have a teacher who's interested in running an after-school remediation for those students that need some support, one of the biology teachers. So it's about, it's, you have to find the kids, find what they need, and then find means to deliver it to them. The challenge is, like, you generally can't do that during the school day because you pull them out of, you know, you pull them out of something else to do biology. Well, now they're missing math. So that's one of the challenges, is to find that time to do those interventions. I'm sorry, I'm talking a lot.
Is there any perspective about that, I know this is your first year, so that the data that you're looking at now compared to what it looked at like last year? And are you seeing less people needing, less students needing intervention? Or are you seeing less critical intervention?
No, I think it's probably more. You know, I think we're still.
From last year?
We're still in that recovery from skills that were lost during COVID, the executive functioning skills, for example. So the new tutor that I'm trying to put on for the tutoring program after school, her kind of expertise, she's a special ed teacher, so the thing that I'm hoping they should work on is students' academic executive functioning skills, things like organization, time management, prioritizing work, study habits, those types of things. Those skills were so degraded because it's a very different learning style when you're learning online than when you're learning every day in school. So I think that those skills were degraded pretty, pretty. So I think that those skills were degraded pretty, pretty bad, and we've got a higher percentage of kids this year than last year who haven't experienced, didn't really experience middle school in person. So I think their needs are even greater.
Is he, I'm sorry, I'm, no, you had your hand up.
Just really quickly, are you seeing a population that maybe isn't able to stay because of transportation issues?
It's always a matter, it's always a challenge. The real challenge for that is to find drivers, because they do have to maintain, it's a Class B. They have to maintain a Class B license, so it's finding drivers. We struggle to find drivers for the teen buses. We struggle to find buses for the after school transportation, so.
So when will we have the next, would it be at the end of this year that you'll have that other data you said you were looking for?
Yep, that next data point, it'll be in the fall.
And are you expecting 50% or, that that data is going to show a 50% improvement?
That's the target.
Because, I mean, I think what we've talked about and with the superintendent is, you know, measurable, realistic goals that we can come back to on whatever the period is to look at, just make sure that we're improving. So I mean, 50% might be a little aggressive, but we really want.
Like more students are needing intervention?
Right. I mean, but realistic and measurable at the end, so we meet whatever month it is or whatever meeting it is. Once you have that other data, you take a look at it, but I mean, we've said that to every principal, you know, along. We'd all like to improve by 100%, but, or 50, but.
Yeah, I'd love to say that we're going to be at where we were in, you know, pre-COVID, plus 10%, but.
Is that realistic?
That's not realistic, no.
So I think what we've discussed in the past is realistic and measurable.
Can I ask one more question? I'm sorry. So when you're measuring the MCAS ratings, so ELA and math are 10th grade. If a child isn't making progress and they retake the test at the next round, did they get captured in that ranking?
No, I think this is the actual, this is the spring first time MCAS data that I used for, from there. So, you know, we do, we, poor Chris Kine has been testing students in the retest, the March retests for, to one more day. You know, and it's, it's been a challenge for him to get all those students in. This is specifically the spring testing period for, for ELA and math. Oh, I would say the data kind of indicates who can't, who wasn't, you know, in the MCAS data. Those are the students who can't perform. Yeah, it is from 10th grade. Yep. This is, this is your 10th graders. That, in theory, that's what the MCAS test is measuring, yeah.
I saw that number here, but I don't know if those are numbers.
Yep, those. Yeah, those are the 10th grade students who take that test, so. And again, it's not counting the students who are taking it as retesting grade 11 or grade 12 or even post graduation.
I have to say that the high school this year has taken data team meetings very seriously. That's a new practice, as in depth as they're going this year. And that there are those that are making sure they're staying on top of seeing any type of growth who needs further instruction. We brought in extra academic learning centers this year. Whatever we can do to make sure that we're providing any type of service students need in a timely manner. Sometimes with MCAS, it's too late, right? So they're very productive this year trying to have resources available on the spot. However, we have to get it through.
Right, so the, the meetings that I have coming up with the biology teachers, that's to look at how student, 9th grade students are doing with the biology content before they take the MCAS test, before it's too late. So to take those students who are going to be taking that test in June and see what, what standards they're, they need support in, where their gaps are. So the, it's too late by the time they're sitting for the MCAS. And so like this, and the data, like this year's 10th graders, they're not reflected there. That's, that group of kids has moved on to junior year. So you have to get them over the course of the year and look at their progress throughout the year.
Can I just make a comment while we're talking about this data and the skills that were lost during virtual school? We just heard about the virtual platform. I hope that when we hear that presentation, those skills that you mentioned that were lost is like highly measurable with this new virtual platform, just make sure that we don't go backwards on some things.
That's a big piece of it. Right.
Easier for some families, but we also want to make sure that they're not going to suffer like.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
And I think a lot of that is going to be for students who aren't accessing school live.
That's good.
As it is.
They still have to pass MCAS. They still have all the same high school criteria. The other piece is, we now know better. So those that will be involved in the teaching in the virtual school are much more prepared than, you know, the epidemic that was forced. So it was difficult, yeah.
I just think with the 9th grade, as an example, with 9th graders, right? If we know that the data shows that the 9th graders are really struggling as they're coming in, and that's where the interventions are happening, we can look at that, we were talking about in subcommittee, you know, how do we improve academic achievement as a district, right? If we know 8th graders could use more intervention, maybe with their writing skills or whatever, researching, then that's something we could help with, make it better so that when 8th graders go to high school, saving you guys some time because they're getting the extra help that they need. So I think that.
They should be in much better shape.
Correct.
Right.
Right.
Nine, 10, 9, 10 to work with them, right?
Sure.
And now having a common platform with the new curriculum. So all students, we can find the trends, we can find the patterns. That was one of the moves, and we know that it is rigorous. We know that it is grade level material that they're engaging with. So if we see a deficit, those are the conversations that we're having now. Why can't our students access this one standard, and what are we doing about it now? It's really, it's sort of paving the way for us.
Is there a way, if you know, the loss that kids have when school ends in June, then comes September. Everyone's always talking about there's a loss ratio of what they've learned. There's a gap comes September, October. Am I talking stupid or is there a way to minimize that or lower the loss of what they've had?
So besides summer school and everything that we offer there. Right, we're also offering a lot of enrichment activities for students that need to stay engaged around the sciences and around mathematics. So we right now have proposals out for staff. That list should be out to the public pretty quickly. We can also invite students to stay involved somehow. There's so much going on in our district during the summer. We just want students to be able to take advantage of those. So that listing will come out.
Yeah, we're just pushing from Josh's point and also Melissa's point about how some kids can't make it.
Correct.
There's that terrible word "but". How can you staunch the loss that they experience from June to September? Are there any hard and fast rules, hard? How do you find the missing piece? How do you stop the missing pieces?
I would have to say at this point, we offer quite, the programs are, it's a huge variety. CTEI has programs that start right after school gets out. They start bringing students in, our summer school programs, the enrichment. And we, and we do cover transportation. And most of these programs, so we don't charge anymore for our summer programs or the transportation. So just making sure that students are aware and also building the communication with the parent to say, this is important. We want to make sure that your child stays involved through the summer. It's only going to help them, not hurt them. So we have outreach through guidance to parents, teachers to parents when it really needs to hit the road, admin to parents. So we have to keep that conversation going.
Okay, go ahead. So access testing, access testing is, the access test is issued to students who are not first language English, so our EL population. Again, we did 195 this year, which is almost double what we were doing just a few years ago. The scale is from 1 to 6. 1 is the least proficient with English, up to 6. We actually stopped testing kids once they hit, it's over 4, I think it's 4.2.
4.2.
So we stopped testing them at that point, so it really would be surprising to have a 5 or a 6. So I almost took those lines off, but I don't want you to feel like I'm hiding something. But we do stop testing them once they reach 4. And those scores have been improving over the past couple of years. So they, there's been, they've been moving in the right direction all along. Dan had to remind me that I have the power here. All right, so areas of focus, well, there's actually another slide that speaks to school safety, but we've been really big on school safety. It's the, you know, it's the world that we live in now. The other thing has been the focus on class time, and I know, you know, I kind of came in with, we were gonna, you know, if you're in the hallway, you better have a pass, and Jimmy Kelly chasing kids back to lunch. But it's important, the most important thing that we do is have students in class. If they're not in class, they're not learning. And so getting students into class and getting that back into the, the culture of what we do, getting kids back into the routine of school and how, what the expectations are, that's been a big area of focus for us. And so it's, you know, my joy is walking down the hall in between, during classes, and the hallway's empty. That's happiness for me. What do you want to do?
Yep, same thing, just to piggyback on that. The focus on getting those kids on time in the morning. It used to be the bell would ring at 7:30, there's still kids trickling across the parking lot thinking they're just going to walk in the door. Doors are locked now. And we'll be standing at that front door at 7:28, and kids are sprinting across the parking lot because they know if they get to that door and it's locked, they got to go around and get a late pass. Some of them that do try to sneak in and get in and try to get by the front desk, they come running around down to CTE, and Jimmy's standing there in the hallway, pass. Now it's not even, you don't even have to ask. They're trained. They walk down the hall, they're holding the pass up, they've got the pass. It's night and day over what it's been. So all of the deans, assistant principals have done a great job at tying that down. Attendance? Attendance is, is huge. Again, I think it goes hand in hand with the regular schedule that we're keeping, making sure the kids are on time, in class, where they're supposed to be. If they're in class, they're learning. If they're out of class, why are you out of class? Why are you out of class so many times? We have access to the cameras now, and I'm sure Josh will agree, those cameras have been unbelievable, unbelievable at, at solving issues of where were you? You don't have to ask. Go to a camera and see the kid walk out of that room, follow them everywhere they went. Well, I wasn't over there. Well, who's this right here? Yeah, okay, well, we're not supposed to be there. So the cameras really helping us to get kids in class. Communication with parents. I know the deans and the assistant principals are on the phones daily. Many, many phone calls going home, followed up with emails if they can't get a hold by telephone and vice versa. The communication is there, reaching out to these kids. We even had a student that was supposed to serve a Saturday. Mom called Friday and said, I won't be able to bring him in tomorrow. Can we reschedule? Nope, it's okay. One of us will pick him up Saturday morning, and he'll be here. And that's, that happened this past weekend. So we're doing everything we can with our Saturday Academy to get the kids back into school and keep them there. You want to do cultural achievement?
Absolutely. So, and then finally, the cultural achievement. The idea that we want students to be actively engaged, that they need to be active participants in their learning. And so working with teachers to decentralize their instructions, so it's not the teacher talking, it's students interacting with each other. It's students working with curriculum, wrestling with problems, that, that constructive struggle that they do to figure things out with the teacher there to guide them instead of just, you know, the kind of the traditional standing in front of the room talking. The new curriculums that we've implemented in ELA and math and EL instruction, and then the intervention structures that we built, particularly like that after school program that we're doing and looking at other interventions that we can do for next year. So all of those things that can help to close that achievement gap that we have right now and promote that culture of achievement in the school. Oh, and the science.
I also want to mention, there's a club that recently, that I, I've been attending that is really great for cultural achievement. It's called the Cultural Achievement Club, right? Something like that. A little, little on the nose.
Remarkable concept, yes.
It's really cool, though. It encourages students to find ideas and ways to involve their other students in activities. And I think they're the ones who plan that mile run thing I mentioned. Or not mile.
5K.
5K. So, yeah.
You know, when I, when I was, in the summer before I started, or in those few weeks before I started, the three things that I heard the most from parents is get the fights under control, get the bathrooms open, and get the vaping under control. And, you know, the fights are way down, the bathrooms are open, the vaping's a tough one. Vaping is hard, but we're, we're trying on that one, too. So, you know, and all of that has to do with school culture and the climate that you build in the school. Isn't that gold in the picture?
There we go.
This is just kind of details on the enhanced safety measures, you know, this, again, this is the world that we live in. So there was the camera system that Dan talked about. We actually had five additional ones installed today. Are they in Bill? Tomorrow. The night lock systems, these are used to lock the, secure the doors, you know, they, it makes it harder for an intruder to gain entry into the door. And every second can count in getting that emergency response there. And then I revised and practiced lockdown procedures, and there's going to be another lockdown drill coming up soon so we can exercise that night lock system. So I'll, I will give people a heads up. I know that those cause a lot of anxiety for students, but I'll give people a heads up. And then other future plans, opaque screening on the first floor windows, just to make it harder for something to hap, you know, somebody from the outside to do harm to people on the inside. Additional panic buttons, I won't tell you where they are, but these, these create like a, it's the red alert to the police department. Stop the bleed training, this is first aid training. It's great whether you're in school or you're at the beach or wherever you happen to be and somebody gets hurt. And then there's a restructured design for the LHS front entrance to make that a little bit harder for, make, really to restrict access. So there'll be a locked vestibule where somebody can come in, but they still don't have access to the full building, and there's somebody that can interact with them right there. So if you're just dropping off lunch for your kiddo, or their, you know, their cleats, you don't even have to go in the building past that vestibule and just keep, you know, the more you can keep people out, usually the better. And then, you know, we want to have students involved. These, these clubs do apply to both CTEI and to LHS students, and for that matter, LCE students, too. So we have a lot of clubs. I'm always open to more clubs. I did put DAKA on there, so I have updated this slide a little bit. There's a lot of ways for students to be involved in what's going on in this school. There's sports. I didn't add flag football, but flag, we do have a flag football team that's starting now, too. We had a lot of success with athletics this year. I'll talk about that a little bit coming soon. Had nothing to do with me. So if next year the teams don't do so well, that also has nothing to do with me, so I am not the good luck charm. The arts, you know, we, the music program, the art program, the theater program, James and the Giant Peach, anyone. I know the Bible's taught, obviously, but anybody else? It was a fantastic show. They got up at 5:00 in the morning on Saturday to, actually, I'm sorry, they got here at 5:00 in the morning to get to the tournament on Saturday. Their, their tech day was supposed to be Wednesday, where they were supposed to go out to the site and, you know, practice setting up. And with the snow, that was out in Norwood. Yep, so Norwood, so they didn't get to go, so they, they did a great job. And I did talk to Andrea today, and she said that they, they didn't win, but they felt okay about the loss because the plays that did win were really good plays, so. Blue Devil, I forgot to put the Facebook page on there, so look up Leominster High School on Facebook, but that's my Instagram, LHS Blue Devil Nation. I'm at 630 followers. I try to post things there that are, like, cool things that are going on at Leominster High School. So the speakers, the spirit week and those types of things, a lot of these pictures came from that. But we just have a lot of cool things going on. Blue Devil Nation is a school climate effort that Nick Smith and a few other folks are doing to get kids involved. Darren East is a big part of that, who I know worked for the mayor for a while. So she's, she's taken those organizational skills to what we're doing. Picture you there. Our guest speakers, so Renee Lafayette brings in speakers for his criminal law classes, and those have been fantastic. So that, David Lowey is the, is a justice on the Massachusetts State Supreme Court. He came in and spoke to kids about kind of what the, how the court system works, or it was even, it was more abstract than that even, like high level stuff about how justice works in Massachusetts. And then in a couple of weeks, like an instructor from the state police who teaches use of force is coming in to talk to kids. They had a Secret Service agent in who, he was actually doing financial crime in Manhattan, or New Jersey. So he had some, some pretty good stories to tell. And then that's Colonel Dana. And then that's Colonel Dana Sanzuda, who came in to speak to kids as part of Ivy Series. So we've tried to bring in, you know, it's, it's not just about what our teachers say, but the people that we can bring in to, to work with.
Some clubs also brought in a lot of speakers too.
Our athletic teams again did great. It's not because of me. So if they don't do great next year, it's also not because of me. But the football team, the basketball, the wrestling team, fantastic. And the girls cheerleaders, actually, the, sorry, the cheer team just took third in the New England's over the weekend. So we've had a lot of fantastic success with our athletic programs. Music always does fantastic. That's football games, Veterans Day, and that's the, the.
Their competition?
No, that's the flag. The color guard, thank you. And we have a dance team as well. And I, they didn't get a picture of them in there. But just fantastic ways that students are involved and doing great things at the schools. And then just everything else that you can imagine, from Spirit Week and Winter Carnival to the Black Heritage Club and the Black History Gala that they do. Just a lot of amazing things that are going on at the school and a lot of opportunities for our students to shine. You want to talk about?
Sure, yeah. And for the Center for Technical Education, Skills USA, you heard a little bit of it in the, in the speech at the beginning by Matt and on Gold's behalf. And Skills USA is an outstanding organization that prepares kids for leadership roles. And they compete against each other at a district level. If they're fortunate enough to win a gold or silver medal in the district competition, which is central Massachusetts, they advance to the state competition where they compete against all the other gold and silver medalists in the state to be the best in the state. And if they win the gold medal at the state competition, they go on to the national competition down in Atlanta. And at that competition, they're competing to be the best vocational student in their trade in the country. And there's even a world competition after that. We have not had someone go to that competition yet, but we still have time, so we'll work on it. That's run by Ms. Chatrin and John Antonetti. These are some dishes served right here in the restaurant. A nice fisherman's plate there. That's a buffet that we put on over at the North Central Mass in workforce investment board when they had their grand opening. The kids went over and, and served all the food that they prepared and they were very professional and did a great job. Someone was having a baby shower, hence the little baby cantaloupe in the watermelon there. And that's just a view of a nice restaurant that we're in, having these meetings in. Thank you, Chris Silverman, for your help and all that. Chris was very instrumental in getting us started with that as well as superintendent and Melanie. And all those people involved were a big help. This is our plumbing and HVAC students that took a trip to Jabel over at Fort Devens for a job fair. And some of those students found work over there on co-op education, which I will get to in a minute. They're with their instructors, plumbing instructor, Mr. Stefanos and Mike Cook, the HVAC instructor. This is our annual advisory board, which is coming up May eleventh. We had a really good crowd there. We expect another one coming. And so we're looking forward to that. It's coming soon. These are some projects. They took the older vans and removed all the rust, stripped it off, all up around the windows, et cetera. Repainted the vehicles. They look fantastic. This is a dugout we did in the city at a, at a park. It's just one of the two dugouts they did over. We did that right in the fall when we got back to school, pretty quick project. Carpenters are working up the street on, right up here on Granite Street on the left-hand side. I think it's on the corner of Constitution or Revolution Drive there on the left-hand side. That's one of the first houses CTEI ever built. Neighborhood libraries, they built those and put those up. Kids had a lot of fun with those. Not many books in that one, but we'll work on that. This is the best year so far for our co-op program. In twenty-three, we have already sixty-nine students out on co-op working in the workforce. This, this is the most we've had and it was a great job that's been done so far with our assistant principal and co-op coordinator, Chris, Chris Kine and the shop instructors in preparing these students to be able to get these opportunities. And a lot of these places that are, they're take, they're calling us and asking for kids. Each year, you know, the phone starts ringing August, September. Hey, you got any kids for me? You got any kids for me? And some of these kids are huge success stories and I'll touch on those later. Business tech will have kids in another two years. They only have freshmen and sophomores. You're not eligible for co-op until the midpoint of your junior year. But I guarantee that program's gonna have kids out. It's, it's going great. This is where our HVAC and plumbing kids get together every year and they go to the vet cemeteries and they do the wreaths for vets. They put them out. The weather was pretty stormy, but they went out there and did it. And then they come back and they clean them all up and, and, and take care of that. It's a great community service project. All they get out of doing that is a good feeling of, of doing something for someone that did so much for the, for our country. Here's our screen printing room with our graphic arts students. We have screen printing capabilities. It used to be we could screen print one item at a time. We can now do up to eight items at a time. We've expanded that. We've got some great, some great clothing lines and these sophomore kids have really caught on quick. We're putting a lot of kids out on co-op in the graphics program and this is a real hot area. That and also the, the wrapping of vehicles. If you go down to Ricky Stone, he wraps vehicles, his own trucks. It looks like a beautiful paint job. They're wrapped. These kids wrap those vehicles and other things like that. They're, they're doing a great job. Couple of kids working in HVAC on some equipment here at the school, installing that. There was no AC in that particular location. It was always a hot room. We got those components and they install the compressors and, and the heat pumps and they do a great job. There's our electricians working in the business office, I mean, the business program room for business technology. They installed three different televisions, including a interactive, similar to these right here, to this one. And they, they lay out, do the mounting, run the electrical and install the TVs. And they do those kinds of projects throughout. Just a reminder, all the lighting in this entire building, with the exception of the lighting project in the auditorium, because those are on a catwalk, which is dangerous for the kids. The staging for that is a little more advanced than your typical pipe staging. And for the safety of the students, we did not do that particular section. But when we did the entire building with all the new lighting LED, we were told by the company that gave us the lighting to install on a, on a grant that allowed us to buy all the lights for this building for under nine thousand dollars. Save fifty-five thousand dollars a year in electricity by having all those lights replaced. Yep, yeah. Hey, it's, it's the real deal. These, these kids do a lot of work and I'll touch base on a couple others. We're thrilled to report that with the help of the superintendent and the business manager, that would be Paula Deacon and Melanie Michaels, we have been able to procure over five hundred and thirty thousand dollars in tools, equipment, software, hardware and repairs for the Center for Tech Ed in the last six weeks. These are additional purchase requisitions, no, excuse me, there are additional requisitions yet to be approved that are in queue, but they are working with us, the purchasing department. And we're thrilled to have this opportunity to take a huge leap forward in preparing our shops and students with technology used in the 21st century. If not for this additional funding, it would have taken more than five years of Perkins Fund grants to try to get these purchases. So this is huge for CTEI and we thank everyone for their support in helping us with that. Gold Lee spoke at the start of the meeting, actually it was Matt, because Gold is not here. But she spoke about a few of these purchases. If anyone would like to hear or see more, I'd be happy to elaborate. These are the purchases right here. And every single shop has got something. So it's been a huge plus. There's our robot friend you saw last week. These are a couple of kids in HVAC who obviously are having a good time, love their trade. Student on the left is in our ISSN program, information, information support systems and networking, working on three separate laptops, doing some upgrades. And students on the right, that's Gold Lee sitting there in the front with the gray shirt. That's why she's not here. She's working very hard down there in the classroom. No, that's, that's a live feed. It froze though. But she's working in Helfer on, on a project. I think that's all we have. So at this time? I think we did. We'll take any questions if you have.
What are the projections? How far into the future can you look to see how many?
That's a great que, you filled with great questions, Ron. No, but is it? On a serious note, I don't see any reason why we won't top eighty. And there is potential we could hit ninety or a hundred kids this year on co-op.
There's no, there's no labor force left on.
I know, I realize that, but you know.
Private sector's more than willing to take students.
What are you saying about the business tech?
Yeah, in, in another couple of years, they'll be able to start sending students out.
But you know, maybe it's me, but you know, age is not conducive, holding back. I mean, there are some kids, I'm pretty sure they're already adept.
I agree a hundred percent, Ron, but this is state mandated by DESI. This is their rule. We are not allowed to send kids out until they have a certain number of hours of training. And then once they get that training, I think it's twelve hundred hours minimum. Once they have that, then they're eligible and they won't have that till the middle of the junior.
You don't want to put them out there if they're not ready.
As he's saying, DESI has said that, you know, X amount of time we need. But with everything that we've been banning about here, the virtual classes, this and that, age is gonna be a vacant number. Maybe it's me.
We're not there yet.
The thing is, we're, we're not there yet, but they're already there. That's the problem.
There's a, there's a responsibility that comes, you know, a maturity that they.
Responsibility, maturity, that's an, is, is it subjective or subjective?
I have friends in, in these things and I can tell you that a couple of years ago, they were not. I would not trust them in my eyes.
I just wanted to add one last thing. That is, our plumbing program. Bill Sullivan was kind enough to remind me that our plumbing program has been working closely with the facilities department throughout the district. And it's estimated that the repairs that they have done for the city to this point are over fifty thousand dollars in all of the buildings that have needed service. And it's not just in the school department. They've done work for the cemetery department and other facilities in the district in the city. So once again, the best part I see in CTEI is your tax dollars at work. Because not only are the kids getting the training, you're getting repairs and things for, for free. I mean, the only thing we paying for is materials. And, and Dean knows that because Dean's one of the guys that asks us for help once in a while and, and we're glad to help. It's a great experience for the kids and it gives back to the community.
I had one question then one comment. First one is, do we know how many actual students are in Lemmister? I mean, is there a count somewhere that tells us? We know how many students go to our schools, but how many are of age to go to school? I mean, how many are in, you know, how many have school choice? How many have left? How many go to private school?
I don't actually know that number.
Is there a place where we can find that out?
Yeah, we have that.
Okay.
I'd like to know what that number is. Like, you know, this is how many students are out. You know, do we actually know where they go?
Yes.
We do.
Yes.
No, no, I meant like.
No, if they school choice out. Yes, we have to track all of that.
Wherever you might go. And the second one is, when you were talking about how many followers you have on your Instagram or whatever, I sometimes think we're talking to ourselves and we're not speaking to, to the outside world. So in other words, when you're posting something about, you know, the drama program or whatever, we're talking to ourselves and we're not pushing the message out to either other communities or to maybe somebody doesn't have a student in the school system.
You're saying you should get, go on TikTok?
Don't even start.
No, but there's, there's way of, there's ways of pushing out your message on social media. You have to pay for it sometimes. But I really do think we need a, you know, sort of, this is all well and good, but we're talking to, I guarantee it's not one non, you know, we're talking to students and parents and we're talking to ourselves.
Well, I, I was just gonna say, CTEI also has a Facebook page and we maintain that. Our business program is maintaining that now and he does a phenomenal job with it. And as a result, we started that two years ago, two and a half years ago. Since that time, our open house for CTE has never been as busy as it has been. And we're talking a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty families that are coming to the open house. Where in years past, maybe half. And, and, and that's what's causing our, our school to, to boom.
And I'm just saying, as far as getting the information out, right? It's, sometimes you gotta pay to get the message out. And it's, it's basically just letting the world know the same things that you're talking about, right? I mean, I get things online all day long of people that have nothing to do with whatever I'm interested in. Somehow or another algorithm, I mess them up, I know how to do that. So I end up with things that have nothing to do with me. But I'm just saying, I think we have a good message and I think we need to kind of push beyond that. And just, why not? It might be something that convinces parents who maybe aren't sending their kids to our schools right now. It might sort of make them say, you know what, this is, I, I should look further into this, right? I should take another look at this.
I saw the video that the business tech program did on a Heisenbach project. So maybe we can see some more of those videos that kind of focused other areas of CTEI.
That's a great idea.
Maybe go by the house site that's being built or things of that nature, so we could put those on different platforms and.
There's a new director at the Lemmister Access Television. And one of the things I discussed with him is, we negotiated, we had to negotiate in a education channel. It doesn't just come, you have to negotiate with them. And it just sits there. And it's just sitting there waiting for people put content on. Whatever you get on there. And he's more than willing to take students and train them down there. And, you know, they could be your conduit to, you know, taking the things that happen here.
We appreciate that, I didn't know that.
Taking the still photos you have and just putting a collage on anything spot. And we also have a radio station that we own. That's pushes itself out to Westminster, Sterling, Devens, Shirley, pretty much the whole area. So all of that is, is, is at your disposal.
Just a tip too, I mean, I, I don't know if this even matters because Facebook's great, but just so you know, students like at least my age, most of my friends, no one's on Facebook, so Instagram would also be a cool platform to try to.
Wherever the parents are, they go the other way. Used to be parents on Facebook, then as soon as the kids found out, well, our parents are on there like, yeah, okay, exit, stage right, right?
That's just weird. Paula doesn't want me doing a TikTok, so.
Nope, no, no.
There would be a lot of.
They already thought of it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
For what you do and keep up the good work. All right, we're now gonna move on to approval of the minutes. Do we get that far? All right, approval of the minutes. Does anyone have a chance to review the minutes? If so, does somebody have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a second. My second by Ron. All in favor, sign upon the usual man. Those opposed, it's approved. Now we'll move on to, policy subcommittees.
We met tonight and we are working on the school committee goals. And we have a lot of rich discussion and Chris is going to sort of condense it all into something.
The little old wine maker.
Into a rough draft, but we did have a lot of good dialogue about it.
All right, good, thank you. Finance updates?
There is not one this evening.
Melanie, you didn't spend any money?
No.
But there's no update and you're here?
You will hear it all on April third.
Let's see, action items, anything else that we surplus equipment or whatever that we.
No, not at this time.
New world business. We have, I know this was important to some of the principals and Wendy said she got letters and emails and something went out over the platform to everyone. and something went out over the platform to everyone. And, and so we, we got these, Mastard awarded the city with two combination dynamic speed, feedback and school zone speed limit signs, and they're going to go to Johnny Appleseed School. And as you know, there's 26,000 cars a day that go by there. And so we'll be paying, the city will be paying for the installation, and Mastard will supply the signs.
Nice.
So we'll do it over the, over the summertime.
Great.
And then one other thing is, another reemphasizing the fact that they'll be getting work on Viscloide Ave. So the students and anyone in that area that, that is, is, uses it every day, especially during, you know, we got a couple of months left of school, should just take heed to the fact that they're starting construction. It's a big project. It's $3 million. But in the end of the day, it's going to be much safer and, and for everybody. So it's, it's a extra patience are needed. And then today, we met with the school building committee. And Greg and Brandon are both on the committee. And the, the essence of who's on the committee is really made up of, it just so happens that every member has kind of a dual position in this. It's either finance or there's an attorney, or in Brandon's case, it's, it's community. And in your case, it's technology. No, I mean, there are a whole lot of things, and that's who's on the committee. So today was the very beginning of, of the process, the first organized meeting that we had. And we're going to just keep plugging away until we have an answer for you as to what exactly we're going to do at Fallbrook School. But that is the process, so. Anything else on the newer old business? And then the enrollment number report, does anybody have a question? Okay. The snow interrupted. Really, in Fitzwilliam? Well, you, you chose to move there. There is 350 other cities and towns in Mass you could have moved to.
Live for your die, right?
This is, by the way, this is national, won't you be my neighbor day. In Fitzwilliam, nobody knows their neighbor. It's intentional. It's intentional. Well, that's why they moved there, because they don't want to know who their neighbor is. All right, is there anything else? If not, is there a motion to approve? All right, Elaine, Quirk at the Drawings, second by Salvatore, and all in favor? You want a second? At my Mastard meetings, nobody makes a motion to adjourn. They wait for me. They just wait for me.